Thank you for joining us for the August 7, 2018, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Between now and the time we hold our next county commission meeting, most public schools in Buncombe County will resume school for the fall semester. So, before we begin, I just wanted to ask for a moment for Saul to reflect on all the people who work hard to support our kids and their education in Buncombe County. Local schools and local government try to do a lot of things to make this community a better place to live, but education of our kids is at the top of that list. So, let's take a moment to reflect on the teachers, the principals, the coaches, the school resource officers, the parents, all the people who come together to make Buncombe County schools a great place for kids to grow up in and learn and prepare for their future. So, please join me in a moment of silence to ask for the protection of our kids as they begin a new season of school and to reflect on all the people who do great work on behalf of our kids and future generations. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. All right, I'd like to make a brief announcement as a reminder that the county is now issuing parking validation and bus passes for all members of the public that attend Buncombe County Commission meetings and workshops. So, anyone attending the meeting this evening may use a pass to use transit or to park in a Buncombe County parking facility in the downtown area. So, if you need a pass, you can ask one of the officers here in the meeting with us this evening for validation of that. And let me read the ethics reminder. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Are there any items on the agenda this evening, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on each agenda item that is voted on by the Commission this evening." Okay. We come to the consent agenda. If there are no questions about any items on the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve it and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
Second.
All right, with a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, we come to a public hearing on a planning board zoning ordinance, and Nate Pennington, the Planning Director, will present this item. Max, you can go ahead and queue up the slides.
Chair, Board Members and Members of the Public, my name is Nathan Pennington, Planning Director for Buncombe County. This is a rezoning request before you tonight. Nathan Best is the applicant representing the property owner, Shecan LLC. The PIN numbers of the associated parcels are 9633.61.6102 and 2496. We're dealing with two parcels here tonight. One, we actually found to be unzoned. It is the bottom arrow that says subject property. It consists of 2.0 acres, and we're suggesting rezoning of R3 on that parcel. The other parcel that's part of this application is the blue parcel with the second subject property arrow. It's an existing manufactured home park, and they are requesting rezoning from EMP employment to R3. The properties together currently represent about 20 acres, but they are going to retain the portion that's in the brown along Brevard Road. This would be retained at Neighborhood Service because that's part of the commercial corridor. There's a gas station up there, and there's some other commercial activities that they like to retain. And the purpose of this application is a future manufactured home park expansion. There's the manufactured home park, as I pointed out, to the north, and the property that's in Mills River, this is at the end of the county in the southern part, is the crosshatched area. We reached out to Mills River, and we found that their zoning is consistent with our open-use zoning. So, this request is actually consistent in that development pattern. The mobile home park expansion is not part of this application. That will be evaluated as part of a separate application and be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment. The location is on a major transportation corridor, Brevard Road. It's served by, the manufactured home park is currently served by a wastewater treatment system, and that's regulated by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. And we have found this to be consistent with the land use plan and not a detriment to adjacent owners. We received no public comment. There was a question from a resident in the manufactured home park, just in terms of some construction traffic. That's not part of this application. And staff recommends approval of the application, and the Planning Board unanimously approved this at their June 18 meeting by a vote of seven to zero. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. If there's not any initial questions, let's open up the public hearing.
Sure.
All right, we'll open up the public hearing for this item at 5:12. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment during the hearing? Yes, sir, come on up, and please share your name and where you live.
Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Nathan Best, and I'm here representing Shecan LLC. Born and raised in Buncombe County, I currently live in Kennelworth, in Asheville. We are a family-owned company that my father-in-law founded here in Buncombe County approximately 30 years ago, and we currently own and operate a 55 and over mobile home community called Rosewood Mobile Home Park in southwest Buncombe County. Rosewood provides an affordable housing option for Buncombe County seniors, and our company has owned the property for over 16 years. Approximately 10 years ago, when Buncombe County put in zoning in the rural areas, we were zoned out of compliance for our use. We have additional acreage that is prime for development. However, under the current zoning, the only way we could effectively develop the property would be to displace the many residents that live there, and we do not want to do that. Our community stays fully occupied, and we have many residents that have lived there for over 20 years. Our park is clean, well landscaped, and well-maintained with very little turnover. We are asking for the rezoning so that we could once again become a conforming use and give flexibility for future development of affordable housing in Buncombe County. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none others, we'll close the public hearing at 5:14. Any questions or a motion from the Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Frost.
Yes.
Before you make the motion to approve the amendment, we need to have a motion to approve the Plan Consistency Statement, which is in the agenda.
So...
There you go.
I get picked to do this because somebody was smart enough to actually write this language down in front, but turns out what we need to do is we'll do this each time that we have the opportunity to, we want to make sure that it's clear to the public that this is consistent. So, I don't think I have to read the Plan Consistent Statement. It is in there, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve this. We're going to have to make two motions, is that correct? So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the Plan Consistency Statement, which states that this request is consistent. I'll make that motion.
I'll sign it then.
All right. There's a motion and a second that the change is consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, you can move on to considering the actual amendment.
Is there a motion to support or oppose the amendment?
So, I'll move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second in support of the amendment.
I'd like to make a couple of comments before we close, if we could. I'm very familiar with this part of the county and this manufactured home community. I actually had an opportunity, oh, it's been, it's been probably at least a year, to, maybe after you were first elected Commissioner Farrar, to go out and, I wanted to show her a nice adult community, and Rosewood was that. So, if you ever have the opportunity to go out there, it's very well done, as was stated. And we need more of this. And I'll commend Mr. Nathan Pennington on saying manufactured home instead of mobile home. We're learning. I appreciate that very much, but it's a great, it's a great opportunity for the county and a way to expand our affordable housing ownership opportunities. I'm glad that we have some property that is perfect for that, and this is. But I'm glad to support it.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a report from our interim county manager, George Wood. Mr. Wood.
I've got a couple of things. I've got a couple of things to go over with you. One is, the first is an update on a $500,000 grant application for a COPS grant to install bidirectional amplification repeaters to enhance public safety radio signals in secondary schools. This is a grant application which the Sheriff's Department is taking the lead on, and I do want to recognize Ms. Sherry Power. She did the lion's share of the work on this in a very short time period, I might add. I went ahead and signed this because there was a deadline of the end of the month, so there's no action required from you, but this is a no-match grant. It would be for over $588,000, so I didn't think anybody would object if we were to get it. But what it would do is, we have had some problems in several of our schools with radio coverage. This is for the public safety radio system. These are the P-25 portable units that our Sheriff's Department, Asheville PD, fire departments, and EMS units all use. And the problem is, is that with modern construction, a lot of times, the radio signals won't penetrate into the interior of these buildings. So, what has happened is we've gone in with our IT staff and done studies on this. We've used some of the volunteer firemen to go in and actually assess these buildings. Out of 44 buildings in Buncombe County, 22 of them have some level of reduced signal. And what this is going to do is allow us to take eight of those who have the worst signal and repair, to fix that with some equipment. And that equipment is called a BDA. It's a bidirectional antenna. Essentially, you have an exterior antenna on the roof. That antenna then penetrates through the roof and goes down to a repeater, radio repeater station there. And then what that does is it rebroadcast and strengthens the signal into the classroom, or into the school. Now, in particularly large buildings like schools, sometimes you'll have a series of these, and that's called a distributed antenna system. And depending on what you need for full coverage, you may have several of those smaller antennas inside the building. But the purpose is simply to give good radio coverage on the interior of the building. And as y'all can imagine, if you had a sheriff's response, you want to make sure that the first deputy in, once he assesses the situation, can call in additional help. He needs, obviously, he needs that radio to work so that he can call in, you know, other officers. Same thing with an EMS unit responding on a medical situation. And if you had a fire incident, you know, you have a fire incident commander on the scene outside, but if you make an aggressive attack on the interior of the building, those firefighters need to be able to communicate with the incident commander on the outside. And if they've lost that radio communications, it makes it very difficult to do that. And all of those situations would put not only the students and faculty in harm's way, but it would also put our, all of our first responders in harm's way. So, with this grant, we'd be able to take care of eight of those, and we're recommending, obviously, that you let us proceed on with this. And hopefully, we'll get a good result on it. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question, George. You know, we have 22 schools that need this, and this is serious.
It is serious.
And you tell me, after we do eight, we'll still have 14 schools that if we have something that happened there, they go in, they can't communicate with the outside, right?
Right. My recommendation to you is, is that we meet with both school superintendents and discuss how we might come up with some funding to look at all of them. And bear in mind, the ones we have done so far are just Buncombe County schools. I've already taken the liberty of having our IT staff go and contact Asheville City Schools and determine what their situation is. And then I'd like, if y'all are in agreement, I'd like to move forward with discussing that, because I agree with you, it is a serious situation.
Couldn't the funding come from the School Capital Commission?
It could come from there. There are a couple of other areas we're also looking at. So, I think we can come up with the money, and I think it's a serious enough situation. We don't want to wait a whole nother...
No, we can't wait, no.
So, that's my recommendation to you as we move forward.
And I think from a standpoint of emergency service, too, I mean, I know the landscape is, you know, making us look at, you know, the potential of someone going into a school to cause harm, but we also have those that are going in there to make sure that someone is taken care of if there's a medical emergency. And to be able to take this, so I want to commend the area interim manager, the staff, the Sheriff's Department, all those that have started this conversation, found this grant, to bring that to us. We have had an opportunity to review this. It's a great program, and I also agree that we need to look at making sure that all of the schools are, that those radios are working. So, I'll look forward to hearing more information on this in the future.
I also do want to acknowledge that Sheriff Van Duncan is also with us this evening, as well as folks from the team who helped prepare the grant, as acknowledged earlier. So, thank you for being with us. Sheriff, is there any additional comments you'd like to add while we're on this this evening?
We actually do, I'll do this right quick, and this got run in front of Mr. Woods very quickly. It does actually call for a grant match. I forget what percentage, but it's $125,000, which the Sheriff's Office has agreed to do through seizure forfeiture. So...
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't mention that. Since it didn't come out of your money, I didn't mention it. But that is no problem. I just wanted to make sure we wanted to get it out of the gate correctly, but it's one of those things that I think you guys see the absolute need for, and we're working very quickly to correct it.
If we could find, if we could find additional money, do you think we might be able to get additional grant money on top of this to potentially leverage it further?
It's possible, Chairman Newman, but the only thing I would worry about it being a COPS grant, generally, they come around yearly, so you might have to wait to another, to another funding cycle, which you might not be willing to wait that long to fix the complete problem.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yes, and we'd spoke, I think, needing me mention, we'd spoke earlier about that with some of the schools being across the road from each other, like Comney Valley and Inca High School, that there's a possibility you're checking in to see if one antenna could possibly do it, but too early in all this to know...
That's right.
...what's going to be.
That's right.
I totally support that we need all 22 schools.
All right. Is there any other update?
Yes, just a couple of things. I wanted to mention to you that at the last meeting, you remember, we asked you to approve the move of the Veterans Affairs Office over to the DHH main office on Cox Avenue. That took place this morning. Later this morning and early afternoon, we then moved the Community Engagement Group into the old Veterans Affairs Office. So, both those moves have taken place today, and you'll notice that the table here is gone, and communication, I mean, Community Engagement needed that, and so Rachel has that now, and is very happy to have that. So, that takes care of that. There are a couple of other things I did want to update you on. One is, I think we mentioned at the last meeting that we do need a tax attorney to look at the issue of not having included the value of these insurance premiums that were purchased over a three-year period. So, we are in the process of hiring a tax attorney now to review that, give us advice on that, and deal with the IRS on our behalf. But it does go back for some of the employees, three years. It's 15, 16, and 17. So, we're moving forward with that. We anticipate having them onboard very shortly and hopefully have some direction on that very quickly. The next thing, just wanted to give you an update, that one of the things we're working on now is some contracts tracking software. This will better keep track of all of the county's contracts, particularly those times when, for instance, that you have a trigger date on whether or not to renew, or there's an automatic renewal. You don't want to miss those dates. So, we're looking at that. It will also be a database of all of our contracts that's searchable, so we can pick them up very readily. We are in the process of purchasing that software now. We've had a group working on that probably for the last six months, and it's included a number of departments, but primarily Finance, and of course, IT looking at the software. And then, once we have that, they'll be coming to you on the 21st to make a detailed presentation on that for you. And then later, the same, we have the similar group working, and actually, the same group working, to update your purchasing manual. So, this would be all of the methods of purchasing for the county, everything from supplies on up through major construction contracts. We've done a, we're doing a thorough review of all of that, making sure we're thoroughly in compliance with state law and in best practices there. So, with that, then what we'll do is, once we have all of that in place, we'll ask you to adopt that purchasing manual by resolution as the official policy for the county. And then it can only be changed by official resolution of this board. Nobody administratively can change it. Our job is to administer it, not make it. There you go. So, we'll be doing that. Now, it may take doing that in some sections. We'll have the ones that we're ready to go with to update, but then we may come back later with one or two minor changes as well on that. But we want to get the bulk of it in place. We already have a purchasing manual, but the changes we're making, we want to get out as soon as possible. The next thing, the school board has requested a meeting with the chairman and myself to meet with their chair and the superintendent. I think in talking to Brownie, I believe what we wanted to do is expand that to three board members and myself, and three board members for them, and the superintendent, if I remember correctly. So, I just wanted to remind y'all, we do need to set that, and we have several items on the agenda from our side, and I'm sure they have a few as well. But we'd like to try to set that up maybe in the next couple of weeks.
That sounds good. I'll circle up with Commissioners, and we'll get a group of three to meet with them. So, I'll, we'll check in with everybody and find out who wants to volunteer.
Okay, and then, yeah, yeah, Michael's reminding me, I signed a letter of endorsement for the Black Mountain Commerce Park. That is to recertify them as a North Carolina Department of Commerce certified site. That's a standard thing. It doesn't take board action, but they already have it, but periodically, you have to get that renewed. So, I went ahead with that. The last thing, I just wanted to give y'all an update. They just say we've had a few openings here, and so we're working on those. The first is Finance Director slot. We are working very hard on that, and we'll have some information for you on that shortly. The county manager, we'll be dealing with that later in the agenda as far as looking at the executive search firm. So, we're making progress on that. The Budget Director, I plan on interviewing some of our folks as early as next week. We're doing an internal promotion on that. We have several qualified candidates, so we've only opened that up internally. We'll interview those people hopefully next week, and I'll make a decision on that shortly. The next one, Communications Director, the same thing. We have three very qualified candidates internally, and I'll be interviewing those also probably next week, and we'll try to make a decision on that. And lastly, we have the Library Director, and I'm going to turn that over to Jim. Jim is handling that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we are in the process of setting up interviews with 22 applicants, and that will be a preliminary round. We will then move that process to a final six, for which the Library Board, Advisory Board, and myself will be conducting those interviews and making a recommendation for a Library Director. That's upon the retirement of G.G. Francis.
And Mr. Wood, the Finance Director position is somewhat unique in that it, the position reports to the county manager, but also reports to the board. And so, there's sort of a joint process going on with the Commission and yourself on that, for that particular position.
That's correct. We will do the interviewing together, and what we're going to talk to you shortly about is the shortlisting act.
Okay.
And we've had a committee working on it.
And right, several Commissioners have been reviewing some of those applications, Mr. Belcher, Mr. Whitesides, and Beach Farrar, correct?
That's right.
Helping you with that to narrow it down, and then the full board will interview the smaller list.
We'll actually be talking to you about that in the closed session this evening.
Okay.
We've got recommendations for you.
Great. Any questions about any of those updates? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Wood. Anything else?
I think that's it.
All right. Great. Let's move on to new business. And the first item is a motion to approve the resolution of the County of Buncombe, North Carolina, declaring the intent of the county to reimburse itself for capital expenditures incurred in connection with various county and school improvements from the proceeds of certain tax-exempt obligations to be executed and delivered during fiscal year 2019. And Eric Hardy will present this item.
Thank you, Chairman Newman and Members of the Board. My name is Eric Hardy, interim Finance Director. And this item on your agenda is seeking, as an action, your approval of the reimbursement resolution for $30 million, as Chairman Newman referenced. The details of this, of the projects that are making... The details of this, of the projects that are making up and composing the $30 million were in your packets. There were 35 projects that you have previously approved. The majority of those came from a recommendation from the School Capital Fund Commission, about 13 to 14 million dollars of that total. There was another $9.3 million that you approved with the adoption of the budget in the Capital Improvement Plan as part of that action in June. We anticipate that the School Capital Fund Commission will take up consideration of another $8 million in projects. There is capacity in that fund to finance another $8 million in capital costs. The School Capital Fund Commission will take that matter up in the next month or two, and those recommendations will come back to you for approval. So that'll be a future decision point for you on that. What this resolution does is it permits the projects that have been approved, that have been approved, to proceed, and we would use our capital, I mean, our fund balance reserves to pay for those as we go along. And then, at the end, once we have sufficient amount spent and ready to bundle for a debt issuance, then that will be also a future action for this board, where you will approve the issuance of debt. Again, all of those projects have been approved by you prior to this, this night. And I do also want to mention that, so there's three actions that you will have future to consider are the School Capital Fund Commission recommendation that will come to you in September or October for $8 million. All contracts that exceed $500,000 for capital projects related to county projects will come back to you for award of those construction contracts. And there are three items that fall into that category. And then finally, to issue debt will require your approval as well. Some will consider this to be a housekeeping item, just so that these projects can proceed. So that's what we're seeking your approval to do.
All right. Thank you very much.
On this here, I see what we have, but what we've gone through today, basically it's construction and what's happening in the federal courts. I would like to honestly see a comeback, of people coming back and reevaluating where we're at here, because this was brought up during the process, during the time that the construction areas were a little bit ahead. So I would like to see this actually redone, and see if it could come down before we ever went there, because we approve stuff, but we're not sure what we approved. And by what happened today in the federal courts, in its own construction, we need to back up and look at this before we do that. And my, that's my personal opinion. And have it re, have people relook at it.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Hardy. I mean, there's a ton of different projects on here, ranging from, you know, repaving of track and field equipment, different facilities, lot of re-roofing projects. So, you know, a lot of these projects are several hundred thousand dollars, there's a few of them that are bigger projects. Could you, could you give an overview about sort of the various stages of planning and implementation that these various projects are, are at?
I can speak to the process that, that got us here and who is responsible for what, somewhat, many layers to it. For Buncombe County school projects, the approval of the project expenditures comes to the School Capital Fund Commission, and so those have been approved. They're at various stages of completion already. You may recall that the action that supports this request comes from March of 2017, during which time the School Capital Fund Commission approved capital expenditures for school year 2018 and 2019. The ones we're looking at tonight are those ones that will be underway during the school year of 2019. Some of those are underway this summer. If you drive by Irobe Jones, they're replaced, they're repaving the parking lot, they've already replaced a roof out there. So they're in various stages of development. County schools have sole responsibility of approving the award of those contracts. The county's role is to finance those, but the county schools are the ones who approve those, those contracts. Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County projects proper come back to this board for approval. And so any award of any construction contract for East Asheville Library, for the improvements to the detention facility, for improvements to this building, because those three are in excess of $500,000, those contracts will come back to you for awards. So there'll be full discussion at that time when we get, get to that point for your, for your approval. Asheville City Schools, the county also oversees the construction of, on those.
So, so many, so many of these projects, I'm asking this as a question, it sounds like a statement, but it's a question, so are, some of these projects are currently already being implemented?
Indeed.
So the, the whole bidding process, it's already been complete, bids have been awarded, they're actually being installed. This is about a financial reimbursement of the county for these projects from the Capital School
It is.
Commission. I mean, I believe that the, you know, the concern that Commissioner Friar's raising is related to, you know, the very disturbing information that came out this, this afternoon about, you know, a contractor who had contracts with the county that appeared to have violated, or at least the allegation, the charges that there were a lot of improprieties there and violations. So, I mean, I think that's, that's the nature of the, the concern, right?
That is part of the concern.
To make sure that we're not, that the bidding process on all these projects has been done in a fair, thorough, professional manner. So, I don't know. I mean, I, I think we're all, you know, we're all reacting to this, you know, really, really unfortunate news that's come out today with the, with the indictments. You know, these are all great projects, nobody wants to hold up these projects, we've all voted for them already. So do you have any, would anyone like to share any thoughts about the, the process?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from you. George.
Eric, refresh my memory. My understanding of this is, is that from the date of, of this resolution, we can go back 60 days and capture those costs.
That's correct.
Is that right, for reimbursement?
That's correct. So the date of the adoption of this resolution is rather critical, too, because if we were to wait another month, then we would lose a month of capital expenditures for reimbursement.
That's the point I was going to make. What I would suggest is you go ahead with this resolution, but I think Commissioner Friar's point is well made. What I would suggest is, is give us about four weeks, and let us report back to you. And I think we need to go through each one of these projects, and we need to give you a spreadsheet that shows when they were approved, how they're being financed, you know, at what, what's the status of them and that sort of thing. And would also give us time to go back to the agency that is recommending them, and ask them to revisit them, and see if these are still the priorities they want to do. And that way, I think all of us would have a better understanding of that. Because one of the things I'm getting ready to ask the Facilities Director anyway, is, is a list similar to that of all the outstanding projects. So we could do this.
And I know, I would be curious to see if there is some way we could look back at the monies, and we, Commissioner Friar and I have asked for this before, the money were spent on the shooting range, how that was built, who the contractors were, and also some of the projects at AB Tech.
Yeah, we, we can do that. Now, do you want me to do this in conjunction with that, or?
I'll do this first.
This one first, and then we can get into that. Okay.
You know, the only, the only, I'm, I think that's a overall good, good recommendation. You know, the only thing I would say is that in terms of just the projects themselves, I mean, a lot of them, again, are already underway, so that kind of the ship has sort of sailed, sailed to some extent on some of these, right? They're actually
We want to make sure that we can recapture that money out of the bonds. That's, that's his concern, is if we delay it.
So we have a little bit of time within the 60-day window, but we need to make this decision within that 60 days.
Yeah, well, what, actually, see, if you did it tonight, he can go back 60 days. So like, if you've already hired architects and things like that, if they're already that far along, or they've started to make payments on construction, we can get reimbursed on all of that. If you delay it, you know, for any period of time, we may lose some of that, being able to reimburse it. The thing I want to stress here is, you are not committing to a $30 million bond issue here. This is just, this allows you to reimburse yourselves for whatever amount you ultimately do. So we're not making any commitments on any of these particular projects to this point, which is why I'm not overly concerned about going ahead with the resolution. But I do agree with Commissioner Friar, we ought to, you know, we ought to revisit every project, and let's make sure that's what we want to do, and what the status is, and is that still a priority? And, and if we think there may have been some issues, we need to look at it.
Well, I'm, so your recommendation is we go ahead and approve this, but then take a look at, take a look at all of the projects.
That's correct.
And I'm, I'm fine with that. And, you know, and if the city or county schools, you know, do have any updated thoughts about any of these projects, you know, I'd be welcome to hearing them. But my sense is that they probably, I mean, these, these priorities largely came from them, you know, based on a very thorough process that they went through, the Capital Commission, and ultimately the Commission. So I, I don't want us to send the signal that we don't think that this is a good list of capital projects. So we just want to, we just want to make sure everything's on the up and up on the contracting process for these projects.
I will say this, 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 this leads into next year's budget process, when we crank that up in October. One of the things that I've thought about, because your, your schools' capital commission fund and funding is a little bit unique. And so what I'm wrestling with right now is, I think we need to have some mechanism to where we have some meetings with that commission in terms of setting priorities. It's their job to set the priorities, and I, I'm certain, I'm not trying to dictate to them, but whatever they don't fund, we've got additional money that we may put into it on capital side. So we need to know what they've selected, so that we know what's still out there that we may want to fund. And it's somewhere we've got, we've got to have a tie-in there, communication-wise, in that process.
I think, and I think Brownie would agree, the way it's been done, they prioritize everything. So I don't think, and I think we are, you know, meeting all their priorities, and I don't think there's anything that we're not doing now that we should be doing. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I would tend, I would tend to agree with that. You know, we've invested, we've invested a lot
A lot.
As a commission with them over the last five years, you know, big projects, new schools, Asheville High, of course, a big project. And so we've worked through some of the really high, high-ticket items, and most of them now are kind of more in this, you know, roof replacement, you know, projects like that to kind of take care of stuff.
Track repair, things like that.
So I think the commissions, I think the, the sense is that probably the revenue that that capital fund has, it will hopefully will be sufficient to meet most of the maintenance and, and new investment needs.
So y'all don't really see a need to tie in with that, then, very much?
Probably not. I mean, it's, it's
Very good.
It's, as Chairman Newman said, it's generated a lot of money, and there's been a lot of money appropriated so far. And it's been, it's, like you said, it's been the big, big items. I did want to just comment on the, on the process of what we're talking about. You know, I agree that we should support the resolution, because we, we, we need to do that. I also agree, and I think that all, Mr. Wood needs his direction from the Board to take the next step, to, to review these and make sure, see where we're at, make sure there's no conflict there, you know, as information comes in. And then, I, I also don't want to send the signal that we're going back and trying to decide whether we need to do these things or not, because we, we've already done that. And however, this is a new, new time, in that we're, you know, we're, we're making sure, we're trying to be more, much, much, trying to be responsible with this, with these funds. And if there's an opportunity to be able to, to, to save some money there, then we should do that. But we got to make sure there's no conflicts there.
And I didn't mean to muddy the waters bringing up the shooting range, but it's just information we've asked for, for a long time.
Right. Okay.
Need a motion?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of the resolution as submitted.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any members of the public who would like to comment on the motion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Point of personal privilege?
I'm getting texts stating that this is not showing up on TV.
Oh.
Okay. Folks on the technical side could check out the government access video to make sure it's broadcasting. Thank you, Commissioner Friar. Okay, the next item is a motion to approve the annual tax collector sworn settlement for tax year 2017, property taxes per North Carolina General Statute 105-373. And Jennifer Pike will present this item.
Thank you, Chairman Newman, members of the Board. Per North Carolina statute, there are a couple of things that need to happen before I have the authority to collect the next year's tax bills. Approval of the annual settlement for the prior year, and an order of collection must be issued for the next year. So in your packet this week, there were several documents outlining what happened in 2018, fiscal 2018 for tax year 17. The first document is simply a notation of the statutes that guide this process, including the requirements that I must present to you, and the certification that I've reviewed the documents for accuracy. The required pieces of the annual settlement include a report of all taxes due and collected in the prior fiscal year, a list of unpaid taxes remaining due for the prior fiscal year, and an insolvent list, or a list of taxpayers who have unpaid balances for tax years 2008 through 2012, that we found to be uncollectible. The second page of the first document is simply the pertinent statutes that guide this process. The second document in your packet is the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicle Collections. This is a fiscal 2018 report of the registered motor vehicle taxes billed and collected by the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles. This report is informational only, because they are responsible for the billing and collecting. But I do want to note that this includes not only Buncombe County, but all the districts and municipalities within Buncombe County. The third document is the snapshot for tax year 2017. And Cassie, if you would, display that, please. These, these levies represent collections through June 30th, 2018, and there are a few points I'd like to, to make on the snapshot. You'll notice two levy amounts listed on this report. The regular levy, which consists of real estate and personal property taxes, those are billed and collected by Tax Collections. Registered Motor Vehicle levy, as I mentioned, is billed and collected by the North Carolina Department of Motor Vehicles. The two levies and collection amounts combine for our overall collection rate. Our overall collection rate of 99.86% rates, ranks a second among the 10 largest counties of North Carolina. Throughout the year, our internal focus is that regular levy, because that's what we control, that's what we bill and collect. And for fiscal year 2018, I'm very proud of our 99.88%. My team is a group of very driven and passionate individuals. They want to help the taxpayers, and they understand their commitment to the county, and how important it is to serve our citizens. This is also a joint effort with Assessment as well. We rely on them for up-to-date and accurate owner information and property values. So we, we, both divisions have the same goal of collecting as much as we can. The fourth document in your packet is the annual settlement report. This is regular property tax collections for, for fiscal year 2018. This is not only tax year 2017, but it is all years for Buncombe County, Asheville City Schools, and the municipalities. The fifth document in your packet is the collection summary for fire districts. This is what we collected for tax year 2017, in fiscal 18, for the fire districts we collect on behalf of. The second requirement of the annual settlement, as I mentioned, was the unpaid tax report. That is your sixth document. These are unpaid taxes as of June 30th, 2018. There's a lot of information in that document. You'll notice two tabs. There's a tab for unpaid real estate property taxes, and a tab for unpaid personal property taxes. The last document in your packet is the insolvent list. This is a list of the taxpayers we found to be insolvent or uncollectible within the last fiscal year, that had unpaid personal property taxes for years 2008 through 2012. And the reasons for insolvency are noted on each line. As I mentioned, that is the third and final requirement of my annual settlement.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was just briefly distracted by Commissioner Belcher.
I want to, let me
I wanna, let me, I wanna thank you for the, and the team, for, and the, and the county and the taxpayers for 99.88%. But what distracted me was, in my treat, it's 99.99. And that's what, when I was going through some of these, it distracted me.
That is consistent for them. We don't typically carry over much for them.
Hundred and forty dollars.
Yes.
A great job.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Sure is.
All right, commissioners, any questions about the motion? And we need to make, so we have this motion, then we have a second motion that we'll take up.
Yes, please.
Momentarily. All right, is there a motion to approve the annual tax collector sworn settlement for tax year 2017 property taxes per North Carolina General Statute 105-373?
I so moved that we approve it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And now we have a motion to issue the order of collection of tax year 2018 property taxes to the tax collector. So
No presentation on this one.
All right. Is there any questions about this motion, or is there a motion to approve this?
Don't move.
Thank you.
Second.
Hold.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any members of the public that would comment? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Jennifer. All right, the next item on our agenda is a motion to appoint a commissioner to the Metropolitan Sewage District Board. Commissioner Ellen Frost has been serving on the board, but has notified us that she would like to rotate off. Our past practice has been to have two members, two active members of the board to represent the county commission on the MSD Board. So Commissioner Frost, thank you for your service there. And I've heard, I've heard two commissioners who have, who have an interest in it. I've heard Commissioner Whitesides has an interest. I've also heard Commissioner Friar may have an interest. Are there any other board members who have an interest in serving?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Whitesides.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Al Whitesides to be one of the commissioners representing us. Commissioner Belcher also will continue to represent us as our second member.
Professor Presley. Yeah, I handed it off.
Commissioner Presley, all right, I was thinking further, you were on there, right?
Yeah, four years.
Okay, all right, sorry.
It's a great board, it's a great boards.
I was thinking further back. So, thank you, sorry about that, Commissioner Presley.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Point of information or order or whatever. Is it appropriate for me to ask Commissioner Friar if he's interested in the position? Is it appropriate? Commissioner Friar, are you interested in the position? So would, would I make a recommendation, would I make a motion at the same time for Commissioner Friar and get a second, and then we poll the board? Is that how we would do it?
Well, we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor. So we've done this a number of different ways. You know, in some cases, when we have a lot of these to work through, we just make motions and kinda go through. I think our general, our general practice has been, when there's a particular appointment like this, if there's multiple people interested, then we just poll the board. So I'd be fine if that's, if everyone's comfortable with that. Why don't we just go through and each, each commissioner indicate which new appointee you'd prefer to have on there. And I'll start with Commissioner Frost, and we'll go this way.
Whitesides.
What do you expect?
You gotta, you gotta
You can't recuse yourself.
You gotta vote for yourself, Friar.
Commissioner Whitesides.
Commissioner Whitesides.
Yeah, and I'm on that board. And Joe was good enough to put, take it off of it.
It's a good one, man.
It is a great board, well organized. And I, I mean, Al Whitesides would do a great job, but I'd like to recommend Friar.
All right. Well, thank you both for being willing to serve on the board. I served on there many years ago, and it is a great board, it's a great organization, very well-run. I believe Commissioner Whitesides got four, and Commissioner Friar got three. So Commissioner Friar, Commissioner Whitesides will be representing us in addition to Commissioner Presley.
Okay, so to make that correct, I think I'm gonna need to make a, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Commissioner Whitesides.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you all. All right, the next item up is a motion to select the finalist for county manager executive. Search for interviews for the entire board of commissioners. And George Wood will start this, start this presentation.
I can all of you a recommendation. This is the committee recommendation on executive search firm finalists. As, as you recall, we recently sent out a request for proposals to hire an executive search firm to recruit your next county manager. We had eight responses. The chairman appointed a committee of commissioners Jasmine Beach, Ferrara, Joe Belcher, Al Whitesides, and myself. The deadline for submittals was last Wednesday. We met on Thursday to discuss them, the scoring method, and then agreed each of us would independently select our top four candidates. Meanwhile, I had staff call on their references. We then met this morning to review those in depth. The firms reviewed were Slavin Management Consultants, the Mercer Group, Inc. out of Raleigh, Gov. HR, Springstead Waters, the Mercer Group, Inc. from Lewisburg, North Carolina, S. Renee Narlock, Coleman Lou, and then Colin Benzinger. Our recommendation is that the full board of commissioners interview two firms, both of which were unanimous selections by the committee. The two finalists are Slavin Management Consultants of Norcross, Georgia, that's greater Atlanta, and the Mercer Group, Inc. of Raleigh, North Carolina. Their relative scores were Slavin 357.5 and Mercer 348.75. Both are highly regarded in county and city executive recruitment. Both have been responsible for successfully recruiting county and city managers in North Carolina jurisdictions. I have personal experience with both firms. The committee was particularly impressed with Slavin having the owner of the company, Robert Slavin, as the lead consultant. Mr. Slavin has multiple decades of recruitment experience. In addition, we like their guarantee if a hire were to leave before two years, they would basically redo the search. We also like their public participation segment and their proven methodology for the recruitment process. The committee was particularly impressed with the two people that Mercer would be sending. Ellis Hankins, the lead consultant, was the legal counsel, then assistant director, and then the director since 1997 of the North Carolina League of Municipalities in a multi-decade career. He's been with Mercer since 2014. The other consultant is Charles Penny, who's the retired city manager of Rocky Mount, North Carolina. And several people here may remember, Charles was also the assistant city manager in Asheville at one point in his career. The committee was also impressed with their understanding of our situation and the fact that both consultants know Buncombe County well. Mr. Hankins' wife, I believe, is from Asheville. The price for Slavin is a guaranteed not to exceed of $23,350.75. The guaranteed price for the Mercer Group, Inc. is $32,500. So obviously, both of these are considerably below the maximum that we had talked about earlier. I've included their two RFPs for your review. If any of you would like to see the others, they are available in my office. So if anybody wants to see all of them, you're free to do so. But that's the recommendation of the committee. I also have the scoring sheet, and if anybody would like to see that. And that's our recommendation. At this point, I'd like to ask any of the other three committee members if they'd like to add anything.
Yeah, a couple of things. I wanna start by just saying that I appreciate the opportunity to work with Commissioners Whitesides and Belcher and our county manager. In this process, we had a really robust process of, you know, assessing some very, very qualified firms. And in addition to some of the characteristics that, that Mr. Wood identified about, that two identified as finalists, Mercer out of Raleigh and Slavin, I just wanna lift up a couple of other things that they, they flagged. One was a real commitment and a lot of experience and expertise in recruiting a diverse and very talented candidate pool from, from across the country, diverse in terms of race, gender, sexual orientation, other, other qualities, which I think is aligned with county's commitment around equity. And I also think these are firms that have the, the sort of track record and wherewithal to help lead this process in this moment. You know, it's, it was clear that this was gonna be one of the most important pieces of work that this commission embarked upon. And I think developments over the course of the day have made that even clearer, more clear and more profoundly true. So I just wanna kinda take a moment and to acknowledge that. I think, you know, this is engaging a firm to conduct a search process, and to do so at this caliber is a best practice that should happen each and every time there's a vacancy at, at this level in an organization as large as the county. And, you know, it's, it's very clear that we have a lot of work to keep doing as a commission and as a community to make sure that there's bright sunlight and fresh air at every step of the process. I think the whole, one thing we've talked about throughout this process so far, and one thing that we were looking for in the proposals that came forward, was the methodology around how community members would be invited to participate in this process, making sure that there's ways for community members from every corner of Buncombe County to share their perspectives, to share the qualities they would look for in a county manager, to make their voices heard in the process. And, you know, I, without moving too far afield from this topic, I think this is certainly a critical piece of the much broader work we have to engage in and now drill down even deeper on in terms of oversight, transparency, and the governance work before us. So I think there's a soberness of tone you may detect as we talk about this, just because of how much is at stake and needing to make sure that we, we do this right and do this in a way that, that honors the great trust that's placed in us by the, by members of our community and taxpayers in our community.
So I'd like to say that, you know, these type of things take a, take a little bit of time. And I, I wanna thank the commissioners for putting in the time to do that. And what struck me was the professionalism of all of these groups, their methodology, they're, they're experts at what they're doing. We were reviewing documents they sent to us. And, you know, I wanna be clear that, that they are not accountable for picking our county manager. We are. They have great community, you know, opportunities for input. I think both of them, one of the things that struck me is suggesting in, in an open meeting such as this, that the presentations be made, that, you know, their introductions be made and how would we, the process would be, how they would be doing the process. So you would have the opportunity here in open session to be able to hear that. And I liked that. I thought it was, and I think both of these candidates that we picked also said that. That was one of the parts of their methodology that I really liked, is that they encouraged us to put it out there to the, to the public and to get the community engagement, the community, community
Input.
Yeah, community, community input. I mean, you know, and they're, they're nationwide. Some of the, the candidates that we looked at, the search firms we looked at were, you know, they were pretty much pigeonholed in a couple of states. And both of these have chosen from across the country. And, but they do know North Carolina very well, so that was, that was important, important to us. But again, all, you know, all eight of them was good. There's maybe one or two that, you know, we, we didn't particularly, you know, care for the information they gave us. But we all felt very comfortable. The marks were very high for these two. And we were all unanimous, they were all in our top four. So I don't, I don't have a, a problem recommending these two to the board to interview.
I don't either. I think what was important to me, as well as all of us on the committee, is this is the first time that we've gone outside to hire a county manager. And when you think of the times that we're in and what we're going through now, we can't afford to strike out. So I was impressed that first we talked about what hiring, having four finalists, I think, three or four. But after looking at the two top, I think we all agreed on it, that we would go ahead with them because of the experience they have. And when you look at their track record and what they've done in the past and what they're still doing, it was easy to narrow it down to the two. And now I think, you know, we can't go wrong. You know, the problem we're gonna have is selecting one tonight, because it's important that we get a firm in. And we have got to hopefully hire a new county manager by, what, the end of February, the way it is, we hope. But when you look at the track record of these two firms and the people that they have placed, especially in communities our size and even larger, and some smaller, too, but they have an excellent record. And when they checked out the references, they were good, too. So I don't think we can go wrong on it. So I'll end there.
So our recommendation would be that you authorize us to set up interviews with these two firms with the full board. And so I need to have some idea when you'd want to do that. Now, we have, we have a work session next Tuesday, starting at 12:30. And that's gonna go pretty much all day. So I don't think you're gonna have any time of the afternoon on that one. And I think you're pretty well gonna be worn out after that one. But I didn't know if perhaps you'd want to see if we could just try to set these up for that morning. And that way, you wouldn't have to sacrifice another day, but we could do it all in one day.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna throw something out there, because I think on the 14th work session, a couple of commissioners are not gonna
Oh, that's right, you're not
Yeah, I'm not gonna be there.
Do you wanna, you wanna just invite them, say, for the 21st?
I think that's what works better.
That's what I was gonna suggest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could do it prior to the meeting.
Prior to the meeting, like maybe 3 o'clock? Well, it'd probably be about 2 o'clock.
2's fine.
Yeah, 2's fine.
2 o'clock on the 21st. All right.
And if we could do that in here, and perhaps it could be, you know, televised as well.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be just like our regular meetings.
Yeah, yeah, perfect. Yeah.
So we would start the meeting, interview with them, then we'd recess and come back to our regular meeting.
Yeah, and, and I do wanna stress something that the three commissioners said. All of these interviews be in the open.
Right.
Absolutely.
Everything we talk about with them is totally in the
That's a requirement.
That's a requirement.
Yeah, that's a requirement.
And your vote will also be a requirement as to which one you select. It will be in the public. Okay.
All right. So we do need a motion to narrow it down to these two. So is there a motion to
I move that we narrow it down to the two mentioned.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to identify the Slavin Management Consultants and the Mercer Group, Inc. from Raleigh, North Carolina as the two executive search firms to be considered by the county commission in recruitment of the county manager position. I'm gonna make a couple of just brief comments. I'm gonna thank the folks who served on this small working group, who worked with Mr. Wood, to look at this, you know, great group of professional firms who do this. And I'd, I'd say thank you for, for narrowing it down to, to two really great groups. Sounds like we've got two great options to choose from. I look forward to meeting the, these folks when they're in Asheville to, two weeks from now, it sounds like, to, we'll interview them. This is the most important decision the county commission will make, while, while we're here, in all likelihood. You know, we're talking about a new permanent county manager position. And, you know, county manager, we, we are a policy-setting group. You know, and we meet a couple of times a month, and we make a lot of decisions, small and large. But the county manager is the person who runs this large organization day-to-day all year long. So it's, it's a really important decision. I'm glad we're going through this process this year. I, I think we should've done this last time. I, I think we probably all recognize that at this point. So I'm looking forward to it. And, and thanks for the folks who put in the work this far to narrow it down to, to these two groups for further consideration.
You know, I do have one, one thing, though, that I wanna throw out to, towards Mr. Wood. I don't, I think in retrospect, we would all say it'd been nice to be able to go through this process before. But I don't want it to go without saying that his input in this was, was, was
Sure was.
His timing being here and his input on this was, was extremely His timing being here and his input on this was extremely valuable, an asset. That, I mean, he was an asset through this process in knowing, in some of the networking that he's done, and so I want to thank, thank him for that. And it's making it, it's really, that's part of this whole thing that we're going through this season right now, as you said, to make this critical decision. And, you know, he's, he's a vital part of that now, and I appreciate that, the time that we had doing this, so.
Absolutely. Very much.
This, well, I hope this comes out right. We have praised a couple county managers on their retirement when they left, and we don't have a good track record, but one thing I can say is, this has been someone that I've looked up to and has been very thorough, and, boy, I sure hope I'm not jinxing nothing. You have been great.
Well, he's interim anyhow.
We're looking very forward to, a long time.
He's already retired.
He's already retired. We already know he's late.
We know what a county manager is now.
Right.
That's, that's basically, we had two, and we figured out, we know what they are now.
All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Where do you get a motion, sir?
Uh, I know, I was just, I was just looking for Don Yelton to be like, Brownie Newman did not take public comment on this.
Right.
Uh, he's not, he's not here. But I caught myself before we voted.
We missed him.
So, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the motion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right. I'm sure he's watching us, and I would have, I just saved myself several email back and forth for not taking comment on that.
Keeping us accountable.
All right. All right, I think our final item under new business is a motion to call a public hearing on an ordinance amending the Bunkin County Personnel Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our Personnel Ordinance requires, by its nature, by its stated language, that anytime there's a proposed change to the Personnel Ordinance, that the Board call a public hearing upon 10 days' notice with a legal ad. And what we're proposing to do is make a few changes to the Personnel Ordinance at the meeting in, on August 21st. The proposed changes, as indicated in the notice, will be to include the Finance Director position as a covered employee, eliminating automatic Consumer Price Index adjustments, amending the county's disciplinary procedures in the event of an unsatisfactory job performance that is egregious in nature, and also to include additional procedures for hiring and disciplinary actions involving the head of the Internal Audit Function. The Internal Auditor already has some protections in place pursuant to the Charter of the Audit Committee, but it's not been put into the Personnel Ordinance. And those are what we're proposing that the Board consider on the 21st.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? All right, is there a motion to provide notice that we will take up these issues at the meeting on Tuesday, August 21st? I'll make a motion.
Oh, second.
All right.
Oh, Robert.
All right, this is just to set this on the agenda for our next meeting. Any members of the public that wish to comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. Frue, I want to make sure, I want to make sure I did this right. Did we actually need to have a public hearing on the setting of the public hearing, or do we just need to vote to give notice?
The Board just calls.
Okay, so, all right.
Officially calling.
I think we did it right, then.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. On the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we've got six reappointments and six candidates.
So, I'll recommend Kim Malakot, Bennett Linkoff, Judith DeWitt, Jerry Hyer, Heiner, Marjorie Latta, Susan Stewart.
All right, there's a motion, and in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mount Area Workforce Development Board, one reappointment. I will nominate Eric Oshlager. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, there are 12 vacancies. We've got two candidates, one for reappointment and one new appointment.
I'll nominate Catherine Kekkerly and Diane Dumit, Dummit, sorry, that's a mispronounced name, since I have a feeling that was a right.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we now come to public comment. Let me go over our procedures. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with our county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is the public's opportunity to speak to us. The Board reserves the right to deny public address on topics that have been previously discussed on the agenda in the same meeting and where public comment was already held. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening, County Commission members. My name is Josh Holmes. I live in Buncombe County. I'm presenting the following resolution on behalf of the Council of Independent Business Owners, a resolution in support of the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department. Whereas the men and women of the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department wear their uniforms with honor, dedication, and integrity as they protect and defend the county they serve, and whereas there are approximately 212 law enforcement officers serving the county, along with 415 employees in the entire Sheriff's Department, whereas the officers and personnel within the Sheriff's Department deserve support from the local community and adequate training in order to perform their duties, whereas the uniforms which are worn and earned with hard work, commitment, and pride by these officers have in recent times become targets simply because of their profession and their commitment to duty, and whereas we, the Council of Independent Business Owners, support the men and women of the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department, who stand every day as our guardians of peace and order, ready to protect our homes and businesses, the weak and oppressed, and our very freedom, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of Independent Business Owners, that the Board of Directors for the Council of Independent Business Owners publicly acknowledges their support for the commitment and sacrifices made by Sheriff Van Duncan and each and every member of the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department, resolved by the Board of Directors of the Council of Independent Business Owners. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Harney. I've met you over the last several months this year. I work at the Western North Carolina AIDS Project and help to operate the Needle Exchange Program of Asheville, so I just wanted to make sure I stay in front of you and periodically touch base with what's going on. Just returned last week from the International AIDS Conference, the 22nd one of such conferences, where there were about 15,000 people from about 160 countries around the world. Fascinating place to be. I don't know if you saw in today's news, I'm sure you must have, opioids have sparked an HIV outbreak in Massachusetts, so I've left this article for you. It's all over the internet, but I wanted to highlight some of the things that I learned at the International AIDS Conference that pertain to us, perhaps, operating a needle exchange program here through our county health department, hopefully as a model for other counties in our region and throughout the state of North Carolina. It says that this was the 70th year anniversary for the World Health Organization, that health is a human right for all, and for the most vulnerable populations, the youth, refugees, immigrants, transgender men and women, intravenous drug users, young women and adolescent girls, and men who have sex with men. Says in the absence of services, there will be a continued rise in HIV and hepatitis infections among vulnerable populations. Chase the virus, not people with the virus. It says that she decides dot com is a website for women, empowering women around the world. We talked about where there's political will, there are results, and that in countries like the Philippines, there were 20,606 people killed because they used drugs. So, if we can figure out a way to help people who are drug users into treatment, perhaps, maybe finding them other alternatives than being killed by our government, not our government, but a government, that certainly would be a benefit in the world. I wrote a column while I was at the International AIDS Conference. I went there as a journalist, representing gayashvillenc.com. There, under the health page, you can read what the Rubber Man wrote. Also, in our local newspaper, The Urban News, the July 2018 issue, there is another column about a needle exchange in our communities, also entitled What the Rubber Man Wrote. So, we heard that $100 billion is spent globally on drug enforcement, $160 million, though, is only spent on harm reduction. So, there's a call to redirect 10% of annual drug control spending towards harm reduction. Universal health coverage means access to all the services for all diseases around the world, and again, where there's a political will, there is a way to, to having results. I thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. I know that we're trying in our community to work with our local health director and medical director there. I look forward to the continued conversation with you, and thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, anybody else? Yes, sir, in the back.
I live in Asheville. Shakespeare once wrote, "Something is rotten in the state of Denmark." Deep down in your gut, you might think the same thing. You might say to yourself, "Something is not right here in our day and age." You might feel misled, uninformed, even lied to. You'd be correct. There is a metaphysical battle going on right now between good and evil. On our current course, as we speak, all around the world, the biosphere is collapsing. The world is on fire. People are dying. Civilization as we know it is on the verge of crumbling. This is bigger than any civil rights abuse and human rights crisis. This is the biggest threat our species and all life forms have ever faced in the history of this planet, besides nuclear cataclysm. In this late hour, we are all in grave danger. We are all facing planetary homicide and extinction. We are all, we are well into the documented sixth mass extinction, a biological annihilation. There is no time for hesitation. If we want any near-term future for ourselves and for our children, we must act now. We have a responsibility to this web of life that has endowed our existence. As conscious beings with higher-level reasoning, we have to make the right decisions. We all share a destiny. As Martin Luther King Jr. said, "An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. This letter is a call to action. Geoengineering and weather warfare are tearing apart the fabric of life. Geoengineeringwatch.org and stopsprayingus.com detail this unequivocally. Inform yourself, share credible data, and demand better. We must change course. I repeat, there is a spiritual battle going on right now between good and evil. Which side will you choose? What will you do? As President Teddy Roosevelt said, "It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how strong the man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who earns, who comes short again and again, because there's no effort without error and shortcoming. But who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat. Enter the arena. Do great, be hero, take action." As the great statesman Edmund Burke said, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." As Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The time is always right to do what is right." I have a fact and summary book for each of the Commissioners here to review. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, perfect timing.
Might have practiced that, but...
Okay. If you've got something, you can leave it here or here, either way's fine. All right, any other, anyone else who wants to? Yes, sir.
I have a group, so I think I got 10 minutes. Is that correct?
How many do we need for a group?
You need eight.
Eight.
And I got to show their...
So, you need, there need to be eight people in the group, and they need to raise their hands. And, and so, okay, and so, keep raising them for just a sec. So, all the folks who are raising your hands, you do have enough, so, all of you folks are giving up your time so that he can have more time, okay? All right, yes, sir.
Chairman Newman, Commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity. Most of you have had emails from me for about a year. We'll see if we can complete this issue that's, we've dealt with for a while. Okay, the property in question that I'm going to bring into your interest is 828 New Lester Highway. It is presently in violation...
I'm sorry, could you just give us your name?
No, yes. Thomas Pinland.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pinland. Please continue.
Yeah. Looks like we've got to hurry. Okay, property in question, 828 New Lester Highway, presently under violation of having an illegal junkyard, and a lot of other things. Present zoning info is NS, Neighborhood Service District. Permissible use of the property is kinnels, laundry and dry cleaning services, libraries, medical clinics, motor vehicle services stations, nightclubs, bars, and, hate that one, and then also it has a, for a conditional use, it can be a motor vehicles maintenance and repair. Okay, zoning administrator duties. If they have violations, whatever, he shall order discontinuance of the illegal use of the land, buildings, or structures, removal of illegal buildings or structures, or of additions, alterations, or structural changes there, too. Okay. Section 78, 677, states it's a written application for a conditional use permit is submitted to the zoning administrator. The proposed treatment of the perimeter of the development, including material and/or techniques such as screens, fences, and walls. Neighborhood Service District should be compatible with the residential character of the area, and should neither add to the traffic congestion or cause obnoxious noise, dust, odors, fire hazards, or lighting objectable surrounding residences, nor should they visually detract from the overall appearance of the neighborhood. Please keep that one in your mind. We have a fence there that is a monster you wouldn't believe. Section 26, 276. This article is enacted pursuant to the powers granted to Buncombe County by GS so-and-so-and-so-and-so. You've read it before. The purpose of this article is to prevent the health, safety, natural, scenic, beauty, and property values of the county from potential adverse effects caused by the periflation of improper disposal of junk cars. Section 26 dash 284. Nothing in this article, this is about an exemption, which is being totally misused right now, and it's absurd what's going on because of it. I'll read a little bit of it to you. Nothing in this article shall apply to any vehicle which is located at a place of business. 828 New Lester Highway is not a place of business. There's been no permits, there's not been anything properly done, and so it is therefore not a place of business, and so it cannot even get an exemption that somebody gave to him. It says the vehicle or vehicles cannot be seen from a public street. Lester Highway can see it very well in the fall of the year. Yes, thanks, Joe Belcher, you've seen it, and thank you for coming by. The vehicle or vehicles cannot be seen from any property adjacent to the property on which the vehicles are. You can see it from all the property in our little community. How's my time going? Good? All right, I have a timeline for our, basically, two years of dealing with this, but for the one year, I have a notebook full of emails to all of y'all and to everybody else in the world. We have yet to get a resolution on this. The violation for the junkyard is not complete and doesn't look like it's going to be. This weekend, we had more vehicles come into the property. We had a junk vehicle come into the property. We had a rollback with another vehicle come into the property. We have vehicles that are still stashed back in the woods, briars, weeds, and everything else, and we can still smell the gasoline from them. And so, what we're asking is... And so what we're asking is, this is a residence of our community, and I'm here speaking for our community, and I feel like I'm speaking for Bunkham County, 'cause I know that there are other issues with this same thing. Residents of our community request, I put demands in quotation, I thought that was a little tough to bring to you, you might throw me out. So we request that the Commissioners take immediate action, rectify the continued violations of the owner, have all vehicles, trash piles, and combustible storage tanks removed, remove the vehicle that's been placed at the entrance to our community for over a year, and actually close to two years now, it's just sat there with a forced sale on it and grass growing three or four feet up on it, and we have to look at it. I think if it ain't sold yet, he can move it. And in the words of Ronald Reagan, "Tire down that wall." And we mean it. Okay? And have a person responsible for enforcing zoning, which y'all have in all this here, make onsite evaluations, continued monitoring until all violations have been resolved. Now, he's not supposed to be able, according to the rules, regulations, zoning, to change any buildings, tire down any buildings, build any buildings, or structures. All of the above has taken place. We've had a building tore down that basically we are quite 98% sure that it had asbestos in it. Well, it's burned, I can't show that to you. There's been three other buildings on the property. They have been changed, turned around, and he's using them for vehicle repair, and he can't do that. He doesn't have a business, he doesn't have a permit, he doesn't have anything issued to him, given that owner the right to do any of this. And so we'd also like to get a list of the people, names, like the General Services, whatever, or anybody else that we could have a conversation with, have a complete understanding with, to get some feedback with. And if you want to see my emails, where I've sent them, and sent them, and sent them, I have some good response. I've had a whole lot of no response. And that's them right there. And so this is what we're requesting, and I know you can't talk to me right now, you're not supposed to speak, I think, but if you could meet me outside or something, just one of you, I'd really appreciate an opportunity to talk face-to-face, 'cause I have great confidence that everybody's sitting there, if what was being done in front of our district and in front of our residents was done to you, you would take immediate action. And so that's what we're asking. And anybody that will meet me out, please let me know if you can after this is over and you're allowed to speak to me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pinland, and thank you for all the others who came out as well and gave him some additional time.
I have some pictures and a CD.
Okay. All right.
He can leave anything he wants.
Anything else you might request, I'll bring to you.
Thank you. All right, any other members of the public who would like to address the commission at this time?
Announcements.
All right. We are going to, I've got a couple announcements. First, on August 14th, at 12:30 PM, the Commissioners will hold a work session on the Health Benefits Insurance and Pay Plan for county employees. This will be held on the first-floor conference room at 200 College Street. That's next Tuesday. And then on August 21st, following Tuesday, at 5:00 PM, the County Commissioners will hold the regular meeting at 200, here at 200 College Street, room 326. And as we discussed earlier in the meeting this evening, we will convene at 3:00, or was it 2:00?
Two.
2:00 to address the executive search firm, to select an executive search firm for the county manager position, and that will begin at 2:00 on August 1st. All right. We do have a closed session item, and Ms. Hockaday, would you summarize the purpose of the closed session?
We actually have two closed session items, Mr. Chairman. The first one is I need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 dash 318, 11A6, to discuss personnel matters.
Second.
Do we also, would this allow us to get an update on the, to consult with an attorney to get an update on the investigation process?
That will be the second motion. So you need to vote on this one, and then...
You'll have another one, okay. Very good. All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then we need a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 dash 318, point 11A3, to consult with an attorney retained in the matter of County Bunkham versus Wanda Skellington Green and Michael Green.
So moved.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are adjourned going into closed session. We will come back and get back out into open session. I do not anticipate that any actions will be taken when we do. All right, thank you very much. We're in closed session.
Yeah, I haven't listened to it.
Honestly, I don't, I don't.
Hello?